Selecting meeting, a regular meeting for Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. This meeting is being recorded and will be shown live on Channel Nine tonight and it'll be shown periodically through the week on Channel Nine as well. So let's begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without limitation and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public input? Since I know you guys are on the agenda, so I guess there's nobody from the public here. Okay. Oh, business review, discuss an act on the reserve fund transfers. Couple things we have to do here. We had previous, who's yellow?
Oop, she said that's the only one we need.
No, we need to approve.
This is all there is.
What's the one we need to approve?
I think it's the one you have.
Oh, I see. We have to rescind the vote on the, okay, gotcha. Okay, we, we have been in the process of settling a grievance from one of the, one of our employees and we had some conflicting information, however, we've got that all straightened out now. We have a legal opinion on what we, we can do and should do. So what we, we had voted on the August twenty-third meeting to recommend to the finance committee that we transfer eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents from the reserve fund into the current year to put enough money in that personnel account to pay this employee at the new rate. We since had a legal, legal opinion that says we don't need to do that. We can begin to pay the person on, as of July first, at their new rate and then a special town meeting will, will deal with the, the additional funds.
The retro pay?
Not the retro pay, just for this, FY thirteen. What we do need to do tonight, we, we don't need to go to town meeting to, to settle the, settle the grievance of four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents because it's a grievance and a grievance doesn't, settlement doesn't need to go to town meeting. However, what we do need to do is recommend to the finance committee that they authorize the transfer of that amount of money from the reserve fund to the, that pers, that line item. So, that cleared everybody or?
Yeah, I feel like that wasn't the clearest explanation because I thought I understood it.
Let me try it again. The...
What's the four thousand? I know the eight, what's eight thousand?
That's for the difference in pay from the start?
From FY seven?
From July?
No. The four thousand is the settlement of the grievance for two thousand seventeen and the issue was that the, the employee should have been paid at a grade, she's at a grade four, step one for a period and then she was at a, she should have been at a grade five, step one for the, for a short period and then at a, a grade five, step two until August twenty-sixth, I believe, and then from August twenty-sixth to, to the end of last fiscal year at a grade six. So I've calculated all of the hours that she had and the difference between what she was paid and what she should have been paid and that's what the four thousand dollars is, divided between the zoning board of review and the board of health. So that, that settles the grievance for, for last year that we, we, we settled that grievance on August tenth.
What, what's this note mean? What is?
That's we have to rescind. That's what we did last, on the August twenty-third meeting, we made a vote to recommend transfer of that amount of money from the reserve fund for, for the current fiscal year. The legal opinion says we don't need to do that for the current fiscal year because we can just pay her at her, at her new rate, which is a grade six, step two from July first going forward.
Okay, so that's rescind?
We need to rescind that first. That's the first motion we need.
Okay, and what was the time period for this one?
This is from, let me read, let me read you what the, what the settlement was. It's agreed that clerical positions for the board of health and the zoning board of appeals should have been classified at a level five from seven-one, two thousand sixteen to four-twenty-five, two thousand seventeen and that's when we split the board of selectmen with the board of health, from the board of health on the twenty-sixth. As of four-twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, it was determined that the position should have been classified at a level six. So the, the calculation of four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents is to settle the grievance for that period of time in two thousand seventeen.
So we don't need to go to special town meeting for anything?
Well, yeah, we have to go to special town meeting to, to, to cover the increased expense for two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
Which will end up being the eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents. Okay?
So this is two thousand seventeen?
The four thousand five hundred and fifty-one.
So before April twenty-sixth, we owe her money for a grade five?
Yes, because the, the settlement was, she was a grade four and we, we settled it for a grade five beginning seven-one, two thousand sixteen until four-twenty-five, two thousand seventeen. And then from, then a grade six from four-twenty-six, two thousand seventeen to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, when it was determined, because the boards had split, it was a level six.
Four-twenty-six, two thousand seventeen.
And just to summarize more extrapolate going forward, fiscal year twenty-nineteen, assuming everything passes at the special town meeting, this would just be in the budget, nothing?
Twenty-eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but from, when did the thirty-hour-a-week job begin at grade six? July first?
No, it began on four-twenty...
No, no.
No?
No, no, the board of health wanted a thirty-hour-per-week person.
No, no, there, there's two different issues.
July first.
There's, there's no additional hours, no additional hours have been approved. This is twenty hours for ZBA and fifteen hours for board of health. There's no additional hours in this. The settlement wasn't, the grievance was not about hours, the grievance was about the grade level, grade level and that's all we're dealing with here. If the board of, if the board of health or the, or the ZBA need, feels they need to increase the hours, that'll be dealt with at special town meeting, but that is nothing to do...
They did it at budget time.
Pardon me?
They did it at budget time.
I don't believe it's in the budget.
For July the first, they were supposed to have it there.
Okay, if it is, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about here. We're only talking here about the grade level of the position.
So did Jen calculate this?
I calculated.
Nothing personal, but...
I, you know...
Based on the information that she provided to you?
She provided me the hours and I, I took the hours and I calculated it.
But if we vote this and this isn't correct?
It is correct.
Either it's too high or too low?
It is correct. There's no doubt in my mind, it's correct.
Jack?
Nancy, I've been a CFO for forty years, it's correct.
No, my position is this needs to go to the town accountant. She's the one that calculates all this. She's gonna be back in, what, another week?
We've been, we've been putting this off for almost, for over six weeks. No, I'm, well, that's up to the board to decide. My recommendation is we go forward with this, we direct Linda to pay this based on this calculation and also to begin paying her at the, at the appropriate grade level, which is a grade six.
Effective?
July first.
Okay, that's, when you get into the new fiscal year, that's the part you said, "We're not into that." That's where this new hours have to come in. That, you're, I'm agreeing with you.
Right.
But I don't think we should say to Linda, "Stop paying her at a grade six because of the thirty-hour thing."
No, she didn't work thirty hours.
I know that.
No, but the grade six has nothing to do with that. This grade level is the, is the complexity of the work. She's been working fifteen hours in health and twenty hours in ZBA.
Afe, all right.
Effective, effect, well...
All right, prior to, up to June thirtieth, we agree on that?
Correct.
All right. There was discussion during budget period that the board of health wanted someone to be there, whatever title they're gonna have, thirty hours a week. So if that's effective July the first and that's what got budgeted, what's happening to ZBA? Because my understanding is there were still two positions.
I don't think that, I don't think that was in there and ZBA, I think she's, I think the employee is still doing the twenty-hour, ZBA fifteen.
The employee has not changed hours since last year.
I'm saying, what I'm saying to you is, I know there was budget discussion and we had said at the time, "Let the board of health decide what they need."
Correct.
And Mr. Pius said they wanted somebody thirty hours a week.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't think we ought to tell Linda to make that adjustment until we know it's in that budget and what...
No, Nancy, it has nothing to do with, with the hours. It has only to do with her grade level and her grade level is a grade six, step two and she should have been paid from July first, no matter how, okay, how many hours she worked at a grade six, step two, beginning July first.
Doing what job?
Doing ZBA and board of health.
It's not what the title, now, you had documents that showed from the union, there's a new title involved. Where is the new title? Doesn't the new title start July the first?
Correct.
And that new title is?
Office manager, board of health and ZBA.
Okay, is that, are we gonna bargain that?
No, we've already made the decision on that. That's already been bargained. We've already made the decision on that. This is about the grade level. We approve, I mean, first of all, let's be clear, this is not a new settlement. This settlement was done, this is not the latest one, on, settled on August tenth when we all agreed to it.
But there are problems with the settlement documents.
No, there's not problems with settlement.
Yes, there are, Jack.
What is the problem with settlement document?
Well, the, the new settlement document, or the one that I saw, was based on a job rating classification scale paper that you had put together.
Correct.
This board never saw that prior to your doing it. This board did not vote to authorize you to do that. The only thing this board had on record at the time was the original, um, the original rating scale, job classification, that whole thing that was done when the union first came. They have used that repeatedly, at least twice more over the years.
I don't know what grading scale you're talking about. We, there was no, everybody says it was a, a grading scale, none of, none of us could find it. So what I had done, as I, as I explained when we made this settlement agreement, was that I put together a rating scale. We looked at this position and we looked at, and we looked at the, the position of other, other people in, in the state, in the, in the town hall. And I, and when the quantitative analysis was done, you then look at what the quantitative number was for the work being done by ZB, by the person supporting ZBA and board of health compared to other people in, in various positions. And it came out that it was justified to be a...
Based on objective criteria?
Absolutely.
That we use to determine the grades of all the other...
But the problem was, you were not authorized to do that. You went ahead and did it and went and did all the interviews and then you brought it to us. We did not have an opportunity to even look at the ba, the basic rating scale you were gonna use.
That's incorrect, Nancy. We've talked about this ad nauseam.
Not, not, Jack, you did not bring us the blank form.
And then, and you never asked, well, you...
I never asked, I didn't know you were doing it. Also...
Let me, let me just, let me just...
When you interviewed department heads and you sat with each department head to rate each employee, department head said that you had not agreed with some of the information they had.
Well, first of all, I'm not gonna get into that because it doesn't matter. There was a memorandum of agreement dated August tenth that was approved by this board. You refused to sign it because you refused to vote for it. However, it was approved by myself and Selectmen Zagrafis. So the memorandum of agreement is done. There's no question about that.
No, there is another problem. Where my signature line is, it says, "Refuse to sign."
You did.
When did we vote on this?
At that meeting, on that, on that...
That's a signature line. You have no authority to write that in there.
What you, what do you like me to write? Just leave it blank?
Absolutely. Because if I, I said I'm not gonna sign it, which means I voted against it for the reasons I'm expressing right now.
Okay, okay.
We have not gone through...
And the record shows that.
The process and the detail.
And the rec, the record shows that.
Now, this, this, this memorandum that's here, that's what I was trying to explain to you. The basis for this settlement, Jack, in all honesty, I could have developed a rating sheet and a scale and done interviews and I would have come up with different information.
But you didn't...
But you didn't do, but you didn't do that.
But you didn't tell us you were doing it until it was done.
But you didn't agree with the principle of approving this, so why would you do that?
Okay.
No, what I'm saying is...
You wouldn't repair all the documents just to vote no?
What the town had done in the beginning, when they were looking at having a union come in, they hired a professional firm, they spent thousands of dollars for this document and that was the basis for how to put people in job classifications. The union came in and that's what they worked with. The next time they wanted a review, they went back to the document and this time they had an outsider take the, I'll call it the framework and go through the information that had been submitted and that person came up with, again, a summary based on that document. We were not advised that a new document was gonna be created and that you were gonna meet with all these department heads.
I will, I will stop right there because that's absolutely incorrect. I, I developed the document, you all saw the document.
Absolutely not.
Nancy, I can't, I don't know what to tell you, I mean...
Jack, I sat here filling it out when you summarized it and then I went to different department heads and say, "Do you agree with this?" And they said, "No."
Well, that never came back to me. We sat, we sat in one of these meetings and we reviewed the document and I went over it and I went over the, the calculations, the objective calculations, the quantitative calculations that I had and, and we came up with, with this settlement agreement. So we can't now go back and say, "We don't agree with this" because it's already been voted by, by two members of the board to approve it. So it's an approved, it's an approved settlement agreement.
I would like, first of all, I would like a new signature page. You had no authority to write that on my signature line.
I'd be glad to do a new signature page if that's what you want, but...
But by the same token, I think that when you interviewed department heads to review the information...
Nancy, we're beyond that. We're beyond that. We've already done it, we've already...
Doesn't their opinion count? I'm saying the process was flawed.
Okay, that's, that's an opinion that you can, you have and I can't, I can't change your opinion, that's fine.
If we had been given the rating document before you used it and we discussed it, it would have been a different situation. I got that document the day we sat down for you to tell us what you had done and how you did it, because I remember writing...
Okay.
What you wrote, okay?
And there was no objection to it at that meeting because we all agreed to it.
Because I didn't...
Yeah, that, no, that's true.
Because I didn't know that there were, there were department heads who objected to what you wrote.
Well...
I have found that out since.
I still haven't heard from those department heads, so if they're really, if they're out there somewhere in this building and they're upset, I have not heard from them and I'm pretty sure I would have by now.
As would I, so...
Can we move on on the...
Yeah, this is a memorandum of agreement that is approved, so there's no question about that. This is the agreement.
And we don't need to argue about the signature page. We'll get the signature page, but that is no bearing on how we're gonna...
The issue that we have in front of us now is, according to the, the legal opinion that we received from our attorney, David Gay, this settlement of a, of a grievance can be, does not have to go to town meeting to be paid. So that's what we're, we're doing. We're gonna take the funds, request from the finance committee, take the funds out of reserve account, the four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and put it on that line item and pay this employee what she's entitled to. The second part of it is that we don't need to go to town meeting to, to make an appro, or, we, we don't need to go to the reserve fund to get the appropriation in that line item because there's money in that line item to pay that person up until town meeting and beyond and we need to go to town meeting to get additional appropriation to cover the rest of the year. But there's money in there now to pay her and that's what legal counsel told us. So the first thing we have to do is I would entertain a vote to rescind the vote of August twenty-third, which requested eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents. We recommend to the finance, recommend to the finance committee that be put in the reserve, from the reserve into that personnel account for two thousand eighteen to cover the whole year, which we've been told by town council is not necessary. So that's the first motion if somebody wants to make it.
Okay, before I make any motion, I do just wanna, just speak about what we're discussing tonight. You know, I entered public service because I wanted to help people and so to hear, you know, arguments about this line wasn't signed, numbers are being thrown out and you know what we've all forgotten? People. We forgot that we came here, there's an employee who is, should have this money and now we're arguing about stuff that has nothing to do and we've totally forgotten about that this affects one of our employees who does a great job, works hard. So I think we should all remember that as we proceed with this discussion. These aren't numbers, these aren't lines on a signature page, these are people's lives. That's why we are here.
We are here to serve the people of the town of Dayton in the best interest. In doing that...
And that's what we're doing.
The decisions that we make have to be based on factual information, correct information. Now, I don't have a problem with rescinding that vote, I have a problem paying that money that hasn't been checked by the town accountant.
Nancy...
And I do question David's ruling about paying for a position that is not fully funded because what are you gonna do if you don't get the money at the town meeting?
Okay, first of all, you're not a lawyer, Jen's not a lawyer and I'm not a lawyer. We're not lawyers.
Nor am I.
So that's why we go...
No, I'm looking strictly at municipal finance, Jack.
Let me finish, let me finish my...
David is an attorney, he's not into municipal finance.
He has given us, he has...
Well, he is our town council.
He's our town council and he says this, and he says this is not uncommon, this happens all the time. So I'm gonna go with the, I'm gonna go with the recommendations that we got from our town council and it was very clear in his, in his letter back to us about what we should do and this is what he's told us we should do. This grievance, this thing has been, being dealt with since two thousand fifteen and frankly, it wasn't dealt with by the board, this board at the time and it should have been dealt with. Either honor the grievance or, or don't honor the grievance, but we have a responsibility to deal with our employees fairly and if somebody files a grievance, we have responsibility to respond to it. We have no responsibility to honor the grievance unless we think through factual data that the grievance should have been resolved as we agreed to do it right here. So that's where we're at and I, there's no question, there's no further discussion needed on whether this is acceptable grievance settlement because that's already been decided. The only issue we have in front of us is to recommendation to the finance committee that we take it from, from the, the reserve, the four thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents from the reserve into the line item to pay this, into the personnel line item, to pay this employee for the, the monies that she was owed and she should have been paid beginning last, two thousand, July first, two thousand sixteen. That's the issue. So the first thing we need to do is rescind that.
Mm-hmm. Come on, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to rescind the vote on August twenty-third for a reserve fund transfer in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and forty cents.
And I'll second that.
Anything else? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So that's done. Okay, now we need to settle this grievance and I would entertain another motion to transfer...
To recommend a trans, or request a transfer.
Request a transfer.
To, to the finance committee in the amount of four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents to pay this employee as part of the grievance settlement for funds she was due for two thousand and, FY two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Will you accept a friendly amendment that, based on the approval of the town accountant?
No, I will not. This calculation is based on hours that the town account, that the town accountant had provided. I'm certainly capable of doing the calculations, I've been doing this for a long time and so...
There's a motion.
Okay, I'll step in and second that motion. All in favor, say aye?
Discussion.
Okay, discussion.
For the edification of everybody watching this tonight, I want to tell you what happened when I came on the board and how this happened as far as why it's taken so long. This town, meaning the board of selectmen, did not sit back idly and ignore this. The reason why there was no immediate action and a detailed letter was sent with seven or eight reasons on why this was not settled over this period of time is because we had ahead of us the potential that we would go to town meeting and ask the townspeople to separate the board of selectmen and the board of health. At the time, one of the selectmen wanted to hire a health agent. We tossed that around a bit. We talked about a number of things to be done. We didn't hire a health agent back then. Most of the decision that was left was going to be that we'd go to town meeting and if the townspeople voted to separate the two boards, the new, the new board of health would determine what it needed as far as staffing, support staff, whether or not it would hire a full-time agent and so forth and so on. The, that letter that was given to the union rep and to the, the grievant got tossed around a bit and the board of selectmen was required to appear with counsel before the Labor Relations Commission in Boston. We all attended, the three of us attended, the previous board of selectmen, with counsel. Our attorney did an excellent job. He was commended by the board, quite frankly, following that presentation. The decision that came down from DLR was basically, "See if you can try to work this out." In the meantime, we had an election. The board changed. The next thing that came down the pike was that the rating scale had been developed, interviews had been conducted, employees got rated. I had not seen that rating sheet because I'm sure I could have contributed to it. I also have a lot of experience, especially in municipal finance, in employee supervision, especially in the public sector, all right? That meeting, when that action was taking place, I did not know that some of the ratings that were given by department heads were lowered by my colleague. I've heard about it since because I was asked, "Why did you vote for that knowing that some of our opinions?" I said, "I didn't know that." So where I am coming from right now tonight is, we rescinded the vote, that's fine, because that took care of something that was incorrect when we did it. So that's housekeeping. I really believe that, and quite frankly, any payroll information submitted to the town accountant's office has to be verified by somebody in that office. You just can't go in and say, "Pay this," okay? And Jack may be right on the penny, all I'm saying is, I believe it needs verification like every other payroll item gets verified.
And what I'd like to say to the people of Dayton is, I was at that division of labor relations hearing too and I recall being told by our counsel, Mr. Bert Mason, who is an expert in labor relations, that the problem was that the town did ignore the problem for too long, they refused to impact bargain with the employee and that's why this has taken so long and that's why we're not going back to DLR and we're here tonight trying to find a resolution. So I just find it a bit disingenuous to select the pieces of information. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the department heads that are expressing all this discontent to selectmen Gulart haven't mentioned anything to anybody else. So this is the first time I'm hearing that.
Have not mentioned it to me.
And I would hope that if this was mentioned to you during the process, that you would have told us that.
I brought, I have brought it up.
You have never talked to me about that.
Well, I must have amnesia because I've never heard that.
I've got, I've got the memo in there that I marked up and you marked up and I'm saving it because I have proof that I did do it. The other thing I will say...
Saving it for who?
We're beyond that.
Not for me, for him.
The other thing I will say is that, the labor attorney that we're talking about is, is Brett Mason, prior to him coming on board, the letter that we prepared for the union explaining why we were delaying action on this was seen by, we had a meeting here with attorney David Gay, town counsel, and he said, "You need to move on this, you need to get the board of health to meet." That was when the board of health had been, the vote had been taken and it had happened. But as you all remember, the board of health and board of selectmen, there was a, a period of time when we continued to serve as the board of health until the board of, the actual board of health got appointed and, I'll say, organized and figured out how they were gonna be operating for the rest of the fiscal year. What was done in that letter, original letter with all those steps is what happened.
Listen, we, we're beyond that. We have already approved a settlement agreement. The only issue we're talking about now is the transfer of funds, the recommendation to the finance committee to transfer this amount of money from the reserve account to that personal line item to pay this employee for an amount that she is rightfully owed. And, you know, I did the calculations based on the hours that the, that the town accountant gave me and I'm certainly capable of doing that and we have dragged this thing on and on and on. For some reason, it's unbeknownst to me because it feels very personal and... And, um, we need to do right by this employee. This has gone on too long. And, you know, I think it's a bit disingenuous as well to say that, um, that people acted in good faith about this, because that's not the case and there's notes in the record to show that, so.
No, that's not factual. Statements have been made that were not factual, you weren't here.
There, there's not, okay.
I, I, I was here, I did see, but it's irrelevant.
It's irrelevant. So I need a motion, or we've got a motion on the floor.
Call the vote.
I would amend the motion to, I would hope, we, to direct the assistant town accountant to make this payment at the next payroll.
So moved.
Okay. So let's restate the motion.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year seventeen transfer request in the amount of four thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars to settle this grievance.
Fifty-one cents.
And fifty-one cents, excuse me, to settle the grievance. Provided that, uh, and to direct the assistant town accountant to pay the sum.
Okay, I think we have motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post?
No.
Motion carries. I don't think there's any question, again, based on our attorney's advice that this employee should be paid at the-
Can I say the number again, please, just a minute?
That this employee should've been paid beginning July first at the new rate at a, uh, grade six, step two. So I will direct the assistant town accountant to make that correction.
Per our vote.
Let's vote on it then.
Okay, oh, that's okay. No, the motion's been made.
No, the motion, this is a motion to direct the assistant town accountant to pay the employee, pay this employee at, for two thousand, fiscal two thousand eighteen at the grade six, step two level beginning July first.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? I'll step down a second. Any discussion?
The only thing I will add, because I'm gonna vote no at this point, and I would prefer that this comes up, is because unless there has been a change in regulations in municipal finance, and this is a DOR thing, you can't pay somebody when you don't have the money to pay it. I understand what attorney Gay is saying. He's saying, you've got the money right now, go to town meeting and get it. What happens if you don't get it? You've got a problem. Whereas if you wait for that meeting and go to town meeting and say, we needed additional X to fund this position to, at the, the grade, uh, what you've got there. And townspeople vote it. You are all set and the person gets the retro right there. If the town doesn't vote it and you've done this, you have got to go back and renegotiate.
Okay, first of all-
That's all I'm saying.
First of all, people, you and our accountant have thrown things at me that says it's illegal. In two cases, I don't believe it's illegal unless you can show me something that says it's illegal.
Wouldn't attorney Gay, our town council, tell us it was illegal?
That's his, that's his job. So anyways, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna just-
I'm gonna explain the word illegal. If I'm talking DOR, I'm talking something that doesn't agree with a regulation or requirement or something else.
Show me the regulation.
Jen has gone through this before.
No, she has never-
About funding articles and not having all the money.
No regulations cited, there was only an opinion.
Just an opinion.
And-
An opinion from?
Our accountant, but from no one else.
We have an opinion from our town council.
We have a better, we have an opinion from our legal town council that we should do this this way. And besides, I'm concerned, he's the lawyer, that's what we pay him to do. He's given, given us this, uh, advice and we should move forward with it. So there's a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
As I said a minute ago, I just want people to understand where I'm coming from.
I think they do.
I have no problem with this coming up and us getting the money in October. And assuming the townspeople voted, the person will be given their retroactive to July at that point in time. And the account from which that salary is paid will be fully funded through June. That's the only reason I'm gonna vote no at this point in time.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post?
No.
Motion carries. So I will do that tomorrow. Okay, we've got that behind us. Complete Streets, Mr. Ferry.
He's scared to come up now. Nice.
Before I start, the notice about the handicap ramps, Karen, is that on each end that we share?
Uh, yes, yep, correspondence.
Okay.
If you want, Jack.
Yeah, why don't we?
Talk about that now.
Yeah, sure.
It's not, uh, it's not my department, but it's, since I'm right here, you might have questions or- it's highway related, you know, our own roads related. So, we were, uh, at town hall and my office was notified of some work that's gonna happen on one thirty-eight. It's been long awaited, um, short notice, but we'll take it. There's gonna be some ADA improvements for the sidewalks at the intersection of one thirty-eight and Main Street. Um, that was been requested probably six years now, heading forth.
Oh, longer than that.
Longer than that. Uh, the, the work will involve working within the sidewalk at that intersection. The contractors, the equipment will need to work within the roadway. Traffic in both directions will need to be altered to one direction at a time within the work zone. Advanced warning signs and traffic cones will be used and also details offices will be utilized. So they're, they're talking about Route one thirty-eight and Main Street. So that's a busy place, almost as busy as one thirty-eight in center. First thing in the morning. But, um, they're gonna be doing, if I understand, three ramps? Two ramps on that intersection and one more?
Is there one there now?
No.
So is it gonna be a C or is it gonna be all, one near the diner? To cross one thirty-eight?
Description of work is build three new wheelchair ramps, including two crosswalks at the intersection of one thirty-eight and Main Street. And build a new catch basin on the southeast corner also. So that must be improving across from that diner also. So it's, that gets, that intersection gets real small real quick with that type of construction.
Is that catch basin gonna cause much digging?
Yes, that, that hole is normally at least eight feet wide and seven feet deep. Plus the equipment and whatever piping's involved. Uh, fortunately, uh, that whole area is easy to be detoured for people that are familiar with the roads. I'm sure they'll use signage and they will be using our side roads, uh, to take later on that. Uh, they, they have not, with the notice we have, they didn't offer their traffic management plan. But, uh, I'm sure there'll be, uh, some minor detours. So that's good news.
Thank you.
Boy, that's taken so long.
But I needed this because it's tied in with what I wanna talk about.
Is there any, it's kind of off the subject, but that, that intersection needs a light. That is a dangerous intersection.
They've been trying that for, for a long time.
Right up there with the ramps, it's, it might be coming-
It's piecemeal.
Maybe it's part of the project, I don't know.
Remember, remember how, we, we, it took so long to get signs? They gave us signs, but we had to install them. It took forever to get the extra utility poles moved. We, the handicap, uh, ramps were part of that study that SERPA did, uh, two thousand and eight. So we're getting piecemeal, but it's better than nothing.
Right. We still have, and this is our own fault, 'cause we have bylaws in place and it's our own residents kinda damp, uh, add into the problematic intersection. We have large Yadcel signs that are left up. I mean, Yadcel's one thing, but when you leave the signs up, that's inconsiderate and unsafe. That probably should be enforced.
Yeah. Yep, that's a good point.
All right, I'm here to talk about Complete Streets. We, uh, spent some money, we spent, uh, right around forty thousand dollars on a prioritization plan. Where we are with that now, uh, we're ready to submit a project and have it accepted except for the design and engineering, which we would not be funding part of that four hundred thousand that would be allocated to our town. Along with that, knowing that, it's important to have those things in place, maybe already completed on the proposed projects, we can use a prioritization plan for that. Because once when it's in place, I'll use, for example, if we ran with this this year, I'll give you a timeframe. Say we submit it by April first, construction project application by May first, notice to proceed by late August from the state, out to bid by September first, start construction by October first, and you have one year to complete. So knowing, like, the work that was, Slapman Gulat helped out with that sidewalk extension on Center Street, which was a small project. It, uh, was probably, the preliminary stuff, what I'm talking about, was probably eight months. To survey the land, even if we own the land, we need a survey. Land created, drawn, uh, we might need to communicate and change things. And then, um, then we'll have something ready to run with. 'Cause everything's gonna be moving fast at that point. So why I'm here tonight, and I, I, I brought it up at the department meeting, you thought this was, uh, more fitting for this meeting. I need permission to entertain, to, well, forbid, to, for at least three projects, 'cause that, with the cost of the construction going up, uh, tentatively, we're gonna have four. But go for three projects, we have a little bit of a buffer for materials. Uh, for the design and, uh, surveying, engineering, and the design, you know, conceptual plan drawing for the projects.
And the funds, the funds are there?
That, no. That'd be why I'm here.
Okay.
That, you cannot use the money from that grant for that stage of the project.
Okay.
It needs to be funded.
Yep.
I suggest that we ask the town people, or start with this board, to consider that in a special meeting.
At a, at a special town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Coming up to pay for that. And then get going over the winter with these projects.
Right.
What are the three projects? Because, uh, are they gonna involve land taking?
They could, yes.
We should have three warrant articles, we should have project-specific votes for each project? Just, only to cover the land taking and all that? And if we don't, if there's any that don't involve land taking, it's not a problem?
I'm wondering if that's, if, we can talk about that after, I think, maybe now's the point, uh, appropriate time, I don't know. But I, I think the next annual might be more appropriate, because that's when the project actually takes place.
But you, you're gonna do preliminary work.
So, so we need warrant articles?
Oh, I, yeah, she's, yeah, she's right, 'cause you're gonna go to the part of reporting.
Right.
Which would be actually, I mean, it's, it's-
The money-
Right.
The preliminary's gonna include the planning, the, uh, surveyor, engineer.
Correct.
Right? The land taking, if there is anybody, any land that has to be taken. But before we do that, we need that property appraised. So there's the cost for, the engineer, the appraiser, the cost of land taking to the property owners, if there is any land. And then we get into the recording and order of taking and all that good stuff. So that's the preliminary.
So, so I think, I think the purpose of this meeting would be, just describe what's gonna happen.
Yes, you already asked, I, I didn't answer your question, lem, give me a chance.
And then we'll develop, then we'll develop the, the warrant articles afterwards.
Using SERPA's expertise, we developed a prioritization plan. You're not held to stay with that list. And you checked with Boston, even when we're approved with the four hundred thousand, we can tweak it to match our own needs as a home rule. But these projects do make sense to prioritize the way they're presented. So that the four as presented, and I'll explain the rationale to why they're there. So Center Street, starting at it, this intersection, staying on the south side of Center Street to just past Stonegate Landing. Somerset Ave, that's the part behind Giorgio's.
Excuse me. Start at Stonegate and go to Center, no?
Start the intersection.
Oh, you're gonna go west on Center?
On Center Street.
Oh, all right.
Up to Stonegate.
On Center Street. That way there, you can grab the school traffic that wants to stay on Center Street. And also the entrance of Stonegate Landing.
Does that have a name?
You have two more developments on Center Street further down that you need to get on the sidewalk as they approach an ascent, uh, intersection.
Right, okay.
Is there a name for that road?
Uh, I, I believe it's Stonegate Landing Road, I-
You think it goes all the way through?
Yes.
It doesn't go all the way through, yeah. So I know what you're talking about.
Second was Somerset Ave, starting at Main Street and coming up behind Giorgio's, ending around the eighteen eighty-one county, which would be the plaza. And that would accommodate some of the ADA concerns that we already have, coming down Main Street, crossing that intersection. We figured it would be safer to stay on our roads rather than walking down one thirty-eight to get to work where some of the jobs are available for the ADA clients. Uh, Pearl Street, which is an easy one, um, and I, I do have a dollar value here too. From School Street to Spring Street, there's an existing sidewalk most of the way already. We would just be enhancing some of it and continuing it to School Street. Actually, right around the corner on School Street, that way there, they can walk across the street to the existing sidewalk on School Street. And then a bicycle signage, whatever dollar value remains. So with those four projects, Center Street one, estimated construction is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. Somerset Ave, project, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And the Pearl Street project, seventy-three thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. The bicycle signage is affecting nine roads and that's only sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. And that's small change, which I think might get absorbed with the construction cost waiting one more year while we try to get our engineering and stuff in place. So we'll probably stay with them top three.
Is that bicycle lane, is that what?
Signage, like the share road signs and, uh-
Oh, all right.
Is that, that would help us get in compliance with Complete Streets on, especially the western part of the town, where we will not have sidewalks for many years.
Will, will the change with the bicycle lane ballot do anything to lower speed limits on any roads?
No. Common sense to, yes.
Therein lies the problem.
It's not common if everyone doesn't do it.
Some, some, some of the bicycle signage is, involves a lot of painting the road, which makes the road feel smaller, which we naturally would slow down. That's where the common sense would come in.
Or at least common courtesy.
Yes.
So the first three are the ones that will have possible land taking?
Yes, once, yes, if we recognize that the sidewalk is, and we're talking like maybe inches of, you know, of feet or two, there'll be more than that for the easement for the construction, you know, for tapering and blending in.
But it's all gonna be surveyed in the design.
Right, it's normal. Center Street, it, I'd be very surprised if there's any actual taking, I believe Center Street's fairly wide. The Somerset Ave one is very tight road now with the sidewalk. It'd be interesting where the natural road exists using, you know, the existing deeds from all the property owners.
Are you gonna have to set curbing on all, along all of this?
If we choose, um, uh, that's a very good question, does that affect the cost? I believe we're using the blunt type curbing, it's done with the asphalt machine and it's-
Oh, okay, I don't-
Very sharp.
Yep.
If there's no grass strip, we don't want the monolithic, we want the straight-up blunt one, uh, so there's more pedestrian protection. Uh, granite curbing can get expensive.
So the actual projects will be funded from the Complete Streets grant?
Which is only four hundred thousand.
And the, but the design of the projects will be funded with town money?
Yes.
Okay.
Design, engineering, design.
Yep, okay.
The surveyor.
Land taking.
Land taking.
Registry.
Registry work.
Legal fees.
All the preliminary work we should be doing, you can call it admin work, administrative type work, 'cause of the power it is.
So we'll develop, uh, warrant articles for those.
Great.
Okay, so, um, yeah, you don't have to vote and, support it now, but I just need at least a nod to proceed to get the- when we bother these people for quotes and whatnot, we don't waste their time either.
Yeah, again, that, that'll be town meeting vote, but-
Yes, correct. Nancy, do you remember, without you having the design phase for Center Street project, I think it was, it was, was less than ten thousand, right?
Yeah, I'm thinking nine something, nine thousand something.
That's without Mr. Giroux, I believe.
I think that was the money we paid to John Delano and Associates.
Right, just the Delanos, that's without Giroux, right. Right, just the Delanos, that's without Giroux, right. So that is a small project. Those other ones combined is probably four or five times that size combined.
Are we, are we gonna have anything special because we're on 138? With the state?
No.
Gonna be working, you're just gonna connect up where the sidewalk ends right now, around the corner? It goes around...
On Center Street?
Yes.
Yes, actually, we would probably start right at the cemetery, because they have a sidewalk that wraps around the corner. Then there's the driveway, so we'll start at the cemetery, continue there.
So you wanna vote to, that we support the prioritization that you've just laid out for us?
The plan?
The prioritization plan, your board already approved.
Okay.
As presented.
Okay.
And we already submitted, the state accepted it, now we just need to submit the project.
Yep, okay. So it's really just the information?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we authorize Mr. Ferry to continue working on the Complete Streets program as outlined. That would authorize you to get cost numbers and stuff?
Correct, and we'll, obviously, there'll be reports at the...
You just can't spend any money yet.
When I was on the vote, that's the time to report to the taxpayers face-to-face, yes.
Okay.
I'll be second.
Okay, you for the discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm thinking after the reserve fund argument, he definitely not gonna spend any money before I authorize.
But, but for the October meeting, we probably should have an article to get money for the, um, the town fees.
Correct.
The engineer, the appraiser, all of that stuff.
You'll have to put a warrant articles together for the projects, and then we'll present those at town.
I'm confident you should be able to do that in one article.
Yeah, okay. I mean, what we'll be doing, we're leveraging the money that the town has to spend to get access to the 400,000.
Exactly.
To make improvements, so it's not, it's a great...
The 400,000, sounds like a lot, it doesn't go far.
I know.
But it's, and it's, it's actually, the way they describe it, it's like a carrot, the way we have a carrot fund. To do work, you should be doing anyways. And this would incorporate the ADA grant and stuff at intersections, and help with that. And also remove obstructions on the sidewalks.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferry.
Good night.
You too.
Did we vote on that? You seconded it?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, letter intent for Green Harbor Dispensary and Cultivation Facility. You guys are up. Why don't you come up to the podium?
I'm here, I may like to answer questions. Becky Piazza, Chair of the Development and Industrial Commission. We've been working with Green Harbor for quite a while now, March 28th to be exact. And we're down to, they need to submit it to the state. And so, this is the letter of intent, we finally got a, if you want a little history, four years ago, they approved, the voters of the town approved the, um, medical marijuana dispensary and whatnot. What happened is they did a medical overlay at where Interplast is now, which is the old Princess House. The new owners refused to let us come in there with them. So we've been working with the Plaza. We also worked with Spring Street for the grow site, however, they could not reach an agreement with Green Harbor.
Is this something, something new? Because I was under the impression...
The end of last week. Very new. So Heidi contacted John Hollingsworth for 1901 County Street.
He's the, Mr. Hollingsworth's the owner?
The owner.
Okay.
And you received the letter of intent from him, signed. And, um, I'm sure it was last week, or was it Friday, whatever.
So the owner of the mill actually got into a discussion, they were considering allowing it, the dispensary?
Yes, yes.
Do you know why it fell through?
Yes.
Do you wanna tell us why?
They were gonna let them grow there, but they couldn't process it there. So they can't kinda move the plants down the road.
Mm-hmm, at that stage, yeah.
At that stage.
Well, if you can't process it on site, you can't dispense it on site.
Well, what the processing is, is then you have a product to take to the dispenser.
Yeah.
Whereas you're not taking the stock, walking down the street.
And taking it out, then processing it, then selling.
Did you see the facility in today's Times paper that they're gonna build?
Yes, yes.
I saw that too, I know.
Wow.
This has been all over the place for a while, and so I'm concerned, I'm interested. So, did we get anything, or did Green Harbor get something from the Spring Street facility saying that they were no longer interested? Because I was, I was about to sign a letter last week that said they were interested, so...
Right.
I'm concerned that we're on top of it.
When they came down, when the lawyers hashed it out, they said, no, they weren't in agreement.
I, what I will say is, is so...
So now you have an actual letter for both things?
Yes, yes. I keep in touch with the commission, you know, frequently, because I am really interested in what the, you know, noble work everyone is doing, Mr. Brickwin as well. What I gather, because I've never tried to speak to a business and try to get it to come to a town, the situation seems that, they seem very fluid. It seems like things can change on the drop of a dime, a deal looks great, but then, you know...
But then, we don't have the medical overlay, whatever the case may be.
Exactly.
Whatever the town needs to jump through as far as to make it feasible for them to come to town. I'm thankful that they've waited this long.
Well, it seems like they really wanna come to that.
They definitely want them to die.
Can I ask you a question about Mr. Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Does, I don't know how to ask this appropriately, does he see, is he really receptive to this?
Definitely, he's been receptive. I haven't personally talked to him, Heidi's talked to him. But I've been in the office a lot of the times that she has spoken to him.
Well, and he sent the letter, and that speaks for itself, the lease and all that.
You know, out of all the options we've had.
So this will require, though, zoning modification for medical overlay district?
That's why the letter of, or the letter that Unite Guys need, it's dependent upon ratification of the town.
Okay, so that, that language, yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, for the medical overlay to be moved.
Now, we gonna be ready to present that at the special town meeting?
We will.
Absolutely.
Okay.
For all the work, 20, 30 hours a week on this? I think I'm ready, as a volunteer.
Okay, so in front of me I have a letter, but we're gonna have to modify this a little bit, because the date is wrong.
Can the date stay the same, Chairman Piazza?
August 7th.
I would, I would, because you're signing it today.
I think we'll, that's easy enough to do. We have, is this your, your draft, or is this ours?
That looks like their draft.
That's yours.
You sent it to me.
Then I got it from somebody, because I, somebody sent it to me.
We, we drafted something.
Yes.
Which I wrote, so let's, I guess all we need here is a vote to send a letter to...
Yeah, in all free signature.
Yeah, I moved, sorry. It's got wheels.
To send a letter to Green Harbor in support of...
With this language, huh?
The dispensary and the cultivation facility at 1901 County. That's correct, right.
They're not gonna grow it at the mill?
No.
The, the whole, everything at the mill is gone?
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, well, this is new news. Like, like she said, I think there was no point, like, they were, not being able to process it in the mill was gonna add an extra step to the process that probably was not.
Right.
How many, how many square feet do they need, and where, where are they gonna put this?
It's actually gonna be in the attic, and if you look at the letter of intent, they're not, part of it's gonna be grown in Middleborough.
The what?
Middleborough.
They're not going to Middle, they are, they are.
They've got a very small grow site, but they want the grow site, which is actually pretty lucrative for a Dyton in taxes.
Of course, can you correct me a little bit? Because I think I was confused on this too, based on a discussion we had. It's not Dyton or Middleborough, they're going to do Middleborough regardless of what happens in Dyton.
The grow site.
The grow site, excuse me, yes.
And as far as anything else that, I'm not unsure of. They have, they were gonna have a grow site somewhere else.
Well, they have several, as I understand.
When you say grow, you mean grow and process as one site?
Yes.
It's one site. Because they have to take it from the bush to...
To nice little things to sell.
Strip it down, because they use, to get the CDCs and everything else. I don't understand, Kathy Spencer better knows the whole process. They use most of the plant.
Use what?
They use most of the plant.
Right, yeah. Okay, so I guess we need a motion to, if we want to, to send a letter to Green Harbor in support of...
No, a letter to the Massachusetts.
No, it goes to Green Harbor.
Oh, okay.
Because it goes with their application.
Okay.
But who's the letter addressed to?
It's addressed to the state.
Okay, okay.
So it's sending them a letter?
For a grow site and a dispensary at 1901 County Street.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board sign and approve, approves, excuse me, the letter of intent for the Green Harbor Dispensary and Cultivation Facility at 1901 County Street, Dyton, Massachusetts.
Okay.
I can't, I can't support this in that location, I was not aware that the mill was totally out.
Nor was I, yeah.
I'm gonna second this for discussion purposes, because I want people to understand. My concern is, what's at that Plaza right now, I will describe as a family restaurant, and the recycling or bottle business, or whatever you call that facility. I just don't, I was perfectly happy with everything being at the mill or the mill and Princess House, because, those aren't family locations, but I consider Alice's a family location, business, there are people outside, there are people coming and going. And this is more of a, it's not a drugstore like, you know, we think of pharmacies. And, and, like I say, I just don't feel comfortable having it located in a place where there is a family restaurant and the recycling facility with the employees, that's, that's my concern.
What I would like to say, what I would like to say to that, which I totally respect your opinion, Slapman Gulat, but what I think is lost when you say something like that is, this will actually help families.
Yes.
Having an access to natural medicine is going to strengthen families.
I don't question that, I'm talking about a facility where there are children present and things like that.
The children will not be able to access the store.
That's not what I'm saying, that's not what I'm saying.
Can I, can I just say one, let me just make a comment to you, I...
It's misinformation.
Well, I think, I think one of the problems is, and I've said this to you before, but the first I heard of this was yesterday afternoon, and so it's...
But she just said it happened at the end of last week. She's a volunteer, she's not gonna spend 24/7 contacting us every time something changes.
But this is a pretty significant change, and what you're asking us to do tonight is to recommend something that we didn't have time to think about it. So that, that's concerning.
No, the only change, the dispensary was always gonna go at the Plaza, and you were...
Which everyone was okay with, by the way, involved in that.
No, I wasn't.
Is the cultivation facility, is the cultivation facility a matter of right? Do they need a rezon for that?
No, they don't need a rezon, they're gonna have it in the attic.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
You mean where there were gonna be apartments upstairs?
But he wants a dispensary, that would not allow apartments to go there.
Oh, I see, okay. Are you supposed to lie?
Because it would be too close to residential. But Heidi's, like I said, talked, yeah, great links to him, and that's where she felt it needed to be placed.
Has anybody talked to the businesses in the Plaza? Business owners or operations?
I don't know who Heidi has talked to, I'm sure she's talked, I have talked to...
That's up to Mr. Hollingsworth.
I'm sure Alice's didn't ask the recycling place if they could go there, you know?
That's really Mr. Hollingsworth, because it's his business, so he, you know, that's his responsibility. I wanna say this, number one, I fully support medical marijuana. And I think it's very, we've said this many, many times, it has to be very clear with the understanding that medical marijuana and recreational marijuana are totally separate issues. This will never become a recreational marijuana facility.
Correct.
It's, I would never support that.
This is a dispensary.
So, okay. Why don't you tell us who you are and your address?
Approaching, I hope you...
What is, well, come on up, come on up, yep.
I'll get you for this, Brooke.
Who's this from? Well, state your name and your address for us.
Okay, Linda Hay, 263 Walker Street in North Dyton. This letter is written by my daughter-in-law, and she wrote it on May 1st. It's been around, I'm not sure if, if everyone has seen it, and so I'm going to read it. "I am writing to express my support for a medical marijuana dispensary within the town of Dyton. My husband and I are guardians, caregivers, for our six-year-old granddaughter who has been diagnosed with, among others, cerebral palsy, a seizure disorder, microcephaly, and global developmental delays. Due to having cerebral palsy, she has a great deal of muscle spasticity and tightness, which can be painful, quite painful. Prior to receiving her medical marijuana qualification, we would have to take her to Boston every 12 weeks for Botox injections in both legs. This was usually painful and required sedation, and was followed by serial casting of her legs, which would prohibit her from physical therapy for at least a week. Since being on medical marijuana, she has not required Botox treatment and therefore has not missed any of the physical therapy vital to her progress. Additionally, we are looking into beginning the process of reducing the amount of her seizure medication, Kepra, since CBD oil has been shown to help control seizures. If we are able to successfully control her seizures with the medical marijuana, we will hopefully be able to eliminate or greatly reduce the dosage of Kepra. It is my understanding that long-term use of Kepra may adversely affect vital organs. Unfortunately, although there is a dispensary in Brockton, they do not carry what we require. Her pediatrician and neurologist both recommended a 30 to 1 ratio of CBD to THC. This means that we must mix the CBD tincture and THC oils ourselves. The closest dispensary that carries a high CBD tincture is in Brookline, which is 43 miles away and almost a two-hour round trip. A dispensary in Dyton would not only save us time, gas money, and wear and tear on a handicapped accessible vehicle, it would most likely help reduce the stress placed on our granddaughter who gets extremely anxious in noisy, crowded environments. The dispensary in Brookline had always, has always had a good number of people in line and can be a bit overwhelming for her. After seeing firsthand the improvements in our granddaughter's muscle tone, reduced spasticity, and pain management, my husband and I are both big advocates of medical marijuana and strongly support and encourage a dispensary in Dyton. We would just ask that this dispensary carry high-concentrate CBD oil tinctures and not the standard 1 to 1 ratio. Sincerely, Christina Luther." And they live in Secoc.
Thank you very much.
Can I say anything else?
No, yeah, yes.
This is, it's very difficult. This child is such a happy child, and...
I've met her, and she's a very happy child, and...
She is, but she goes through this pain all the time, she lives with it, and it's, she's, we've seen such a difference in her since she has been on the...
And we've heard a lot of support for the concept of medical marijuana. One thing I'd like to say, you know, as I read this... One thing I'd like to say, you know, as I read this lease, the lease is, is for everything. The lease is for the dispensing and the cultivation facility, based on the approval of the medical overlay.
Right.
So, so if that were to be disapproved or not approved at town meeting,
We wouldn't be...
then, then the lease will be, the lease will be gone.
Right, unemployed, right.
So, I guess what I'm saying, we, we, my, my feeling is, I support the concept. And so I would not, I would be in favor of signing the letter of support. And then at town meeting, the, the town will have the ability to vote on whether this is an appropriate place for a medical marijuana facility.
And they already approved the Princess House one. I don't just support the concept. I support Green Harbor coming to Dayton, not just some fictitious, you know, phantom concept. This is real. They really wanna be here. I want them here. I think it'll be good for Dayton. I think it'll be good for the people in Dayton, as well as the tax rolls.
Yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely, Mister Burke, when you're not shy, we know that. Don't pretend to be shy.
Two, on two tracks. One, to, actually, I feel for you on that, because we also have some, my grandson, I understand how this works. On a veteran's note, and Jack, especially you being former veteran agent for a number of towns back in your other careers there. I have friends that have PTSD, who are off the heavy meds now and do the marijuana that's medical with a card, and it's helpful to them. So, that, that's one thing that I think would be positive, as far as helping people. On the second track, from what I understand, when they build these facilities, you don't even know they're there.
Exactly.
They're insulated.
You can't see it.
You don't smell it growing.
You can't see it.
You may notice, you know, they have, they're gonna fix it all up, and I understand, I did take a walkthrough with our chair, and I met some of these folks from Green Harbor, and I went up into that upstairs, and you know what I'm talking about.
We've already, they've already made a very thorough presentation.
It's not, and I like going to Alice's.
And I, and I think because we originally supported the grow facility at the, at the factory and the dispensary.
When we first voted on it, we were just voting in general. It was not for, correct me if I'm wrong, it was not for a specific location. It was just, do you want Green Harbor to come to Dayton?
And we created the medical overlay to allow them to go in.
Now, we're at the next stage, yes.
So, my feeling is, there's no que... Mm-hmm. There's no question, I don't think, that we, unless, I think we support the concept and, and the Green Harbor.
When, absolutely. And, and quite frankly, yes, one of the selling points was the mill.
Right.
And I even said they've got an ideal setup, because if they can get permission for dispensing, they have their own private entrance, everything is...
But it's not happening.
So...
What I'm thinking, Jack, and I...
I guess, I guess what I'm saying, you don't, I don't think you need to sell the concept to us, or the fact that...
Oh, no, I'm not trying to sell the concept, honey.
We absolutely know.
One more point, and I'll, I'll go back into the...
The dark recesses of the room.
The dark recess of the public, yeah, I love it. But anyhow, if I wasn't interested, I wouldn't be here to help the town. The, I lost my thought already, but, oh, in business, as you well know, it's very fluid.
Sure.
You almost have to be making, I know we can't move that fast in town government, but sometimes we can. But if we don't start, I mean, I know I'm not up here cheering, rah rah, sis boom bar, but we gotta start doing something.
Well, it's, and you know, it's like a domino effect.
I mean, yeah.
This gets shot down, then the next business...
But we're not shooting anything.
No, 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 I didn't say that.
This is positive.
Absolutely, it's positive. If it's voted for and approved, it's positive. If not, it's just a piece of paper that basically tells people, we don't want business in Dayton, so...
Well, and I don't agree with that. I don't think that's the case.
When the gentleman came and talked to us that night, we had talked about public meetings. When is there gonna be a public meeting that people can come and, and express, before town meeting, how they feel? If there's, if there are a number of people out there that really feel this is the way to go.
If we don't take this step, what's the point? We need to take this step. This has been a process, this whole thing.
We sent one letter in, correct?
No, we didn't send any.
Way back then.
Not with the...
Specific information.
Right. And that's what this is about.
So, as I said earlier...
As we know, government moves in their own pattern.
Well, this was also based on the changes in the plan, so, which we can't predict.
The problem was, we're obviously within a blast when they refused.
Okay, so, so it... So, at this point, though...
Well, that's the Princess House.
So, at this point, this letter only, only is the selectman's support for Green Harbor really coming to, coming to Dayton. And we have to put a, a location, so the location is included in here. There'll have to be a public, there'll have to be a public hearing before we go to town meeting.
Absolutely.
And you're running pretty short on time. But, and then, and then at town, and then, okay, and then at town meeting, there'll be further discussion about whether the, for the approval of the medical overlay district. So, this doesn't really lock us into anything, is what I'm saying.
No, but it tells people that are watching and the businesses that are thinking about coming to Dayton that we want them here. That's the point.
Whenever you get mixed up with the state, it's easy to come down to town and say you wanna open another coffee shop. It's easier. You don't have to run to the state. You don't have to jump through the hoops.
Let's be, let's be clear, this has nothing to do with business in town. The only issue here is the medical marijuana facility. We want business in town. Approved this or not, that doesn't indicate, we do or do not want business.
Obviously indicated.
No, it's symbolism.
I, okay, whatever, anyway, we, so we have a...
It's the optics.
Ah, thank you. Someone's paying attention.
I understand where you're coming from, Mister Chairman, but it's not...
Yes, I just wanna, I wanna say, we, I just wanna say we want business in town, and let's not, let's not talk about this anymore.
We have to do it. We have to actually do it. We can say whatever we want on camera. Are we doing it? Are we making the decisions that show people we want business?
We have a motion in a second, and... Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 No, no.
So, we'll, we'll correct the letter, and I'll sign, I'll, how about a motion for, that allow me to sign the letter, so we don't have to...
Is that the for, would that be acceptable?
I'm not sure.
I don't think we should change it.
Because we'll cite, well, we'll cite the, we'll cite the board of, we'll cite the meeting when, tonight's meeting, we support it. Just to expedite, get this thing going.
I think we should all sign it. Oh, if Selectmen Goulart doesn't want to, I'm just saying...
I suggest that you prepare a letter from, signed by the chairman, that indicates that it was voted on tonight, and the vote was two to one.
Right.
But I would, I wanna make sure you include...
That's fine. Give this, give it to Karen, and we'll make sure it includes it, okay? Okay, that motion, we vote the motion carries, okay?
And for those listening, we are not anti-business. Absolutely not.
No, absolutely not. We want business, and we wanna support every business we can get into town.
You're welcome.
It's appropriate, right? Okay. Acceptance of the dispatch, a nine-one-one communications union contract. So, this is the, have you all seen this contract?
I have not.
I was just gonna say, is that the entire contract? Cause I haven't seen it.
Okay.
I've seen the summaries when you've been negotiating, but I haven't seen the whole package.
Okay, I think we should table this till next, next week then.
Karen, can we get copies of this, please?
Just to be clear, we've already, we've already agreed to the basis for settlement. We've all seen that.
Yes.
Yeah, we saw the communication.
So, Karen's incorporated in there, but everybody will get a chance to read it, okay?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion, we table to, I table action on the nine-eleven communications contract until the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Center Street sidewalk project, Stonewall front of Bristol County Agricultural High School. I guess that's yours, Nancy.
Yes, what this is about, if you've driven down Center Street, you've noticed that right in front of the Gilbert Hall, the main building, there is quite a drop from the lawn down to the sidewalk. This Friday, the construction crew and the foreman will be back. There is a punch list of things that have to be corrected. Also, Mister Ferry has been in contact with the engineer that drew the plans, because there is a question about what kind of wall, I guess you'd call it, that will be put in where that drop is. We looked at a number of options. We've met with Mister Bragger and two members of the Aggie school staff, and we've talked about different options, everything from grading the lawn to meet the sidewalk. That was discounted because it would require too much removal of topsoil, and it would kill those maple trees. And so, Mister Bragger went to the Board of Trustees meeting with a proposal that was mutually discussed that day, that a small retaining wall be built, so that no more topsoil has to be removed, and that there will be no further encroachment on the red maple trees. We were told those trees are stressed, and they were stressed before the sidewalk project. And, but in any case, the Board of Trustees, through Mister Bragger, has given us the go-ahead. So, on Friday, when the contractor is back in town cleaning up some punch list items, we're going to be talking to him about a form of stone retaining wall, something that will fit the neighborhood. But that's where we are with the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Applicant for Sealer, Weights, and Measures. I guess we have one applicant?
Mister Chairman, I should just mention also to the property owners on Center Street, I don't want you to think we forgot you, where I'm just talking about the Aggie School. There are a couple of places where there was plantings removed, and there is a hole. That's gonna be filled in with loom. It will be seeded. And that strip of grass that runs along the sidewalk to the edge of the road, that's going to be leveled off, cleaned out. It's kinda bumpy and stony, and that will also be seeded. So, we're not only looking at the Aggie School, we're looking at the entire project. So, property owners, best assured, your property will be returned to original or better condition.
Thanks. So, skipping down a bit, but we have an applicant for the Sealer of Weights and Measures. Mister Ray White has sent in a, this is a short resume. He's a certified sealer of weights and measures in Massachusetts with thirty years' experience in the field. He is currently the Sealer of Weights and Measures for Fall River, Swansea, and Rehoboth, all part-time. Actually, Fall River is full-time. And he's the only applicant, and he appears to be qualified to do this, so I would entertain a motion. What are you laughing at?
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Ray White to the position of Seal of Weights, Waits, Whites, yeah.
Whites of Westport.
Seal of Weights and Measures.
It's been a long, a long meeting. Go ahead.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'm just glad we got one.
Okay. The, the next thing on the agenda is a agreement between the town of Berkeley and the town of Dayton for our veterans' agent. The Dayton Board of Selectmen, this is, this would be to the Board of Selectmen in Berkeley. Town Board of Selectmen wishes to renew the agreement made by the two towns regarding our veterans' agent. Agreement is that the town of Berkeley would forward to Dayton eleven hundred dollars in expenses and three thousand one hundred dollars for secretarial expense, secretarial salary. Please forward payment to the town of Dayton. Trying to think, what about Mister Hershey's salary?
I'm not sure how he's paid.
I should know, because I was. But I'm not sure either.
Were you paid? Were you paid?
Well, you may have gotten one check from Dayton, but the question is, how is the agent, is the money paid to the town of Dayton?
Okay, no. No, no, actually, I get a check from both towns.
Oh, okay, so that...
So, town, so, okay.
So, this is separate?
This is, this is only for the support of the veterans' agent.
Okay.
Berkeley, Berkeley, Berkeley reimburs, pays Mister Hershey separately, and the town of Dayton pays him.
So, I just have one general question about that, and I'm gonna direct it to you, Mister Chairman, because you are, were our veterans' agent. Now, we have the veterans' van. Is Miss, is the veterans' agent, I should just say veterans' agent, the title, allowed to use that van to service veterans in Berkeley? Is that Dayton-specific?
That's a very good question.
I believe he is servicing veterans in Dayton. Excuse me.
I hope he's servicing veterans in Dayton.
That, that came up when we were talking about acquiring a vehicle.
Yes.
And I believe he does. So, I guess...
What is the eleven hundred, Board Dean?
Well, when you say supplies, I wonder if that's gasoline and things like that.
I'm hoping it's gasoline. That's why I brought that up.
Expenses.
Yeah, I doubt it's for gasoline, cause they could...
But is this an increase from before we had the van? Cause if it's the same thing, that wouldn't make much sense.
Maybe we should...
I think we should wait on this.
Talk to, talk to...
Even though I'm excited, yeah.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we table action on the renewing the agreement with Berkeley for veterans' agent services.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a request for waiver of a billing, billing department fee for temporary tent set up for Bristol County Agricultural High School for their fundraiser this weekend for the Farm, Farm-to-Table fundraiser.
This is the permanent application?
Right. So, the request is to waive the, what's the fee, the hundred and fifty dollar fee? And my feeling is that, you know, it's a fundraiser. It's part of our town.
Absolutely.
And it would seem to me that it would be a good thing to waive the fee rather than, you know, charge them for...
We need to put this on the list when we look at all those fees that we were talking about for nonprofits. I will make the motion to waive the fee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so we're gonna waive the fee.
Thank you.
Okay, we've already, announcements. How do we do the announcements now? The list is getting longer again. Why don't you do, you wanna do a few, I'll do a few, and Nancy do a few?
Sure, I'll start. Trash bags, Sharps disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Please call five zero eight, six six nine, six four three one for more information. There are vacancies on the Land Use Committee and the Capital Outlay Committee. The Board of Selectmen has resumed its normal weekly meeting schedule, and the Dayton Lions Club Food Bank distribution will be September twenty-third from eight AM to nine thirty AM.
Stop. I'll do the next three. Senator Mark Pacheco or representative will be at the Dayton Council on Aging, three hundred Lincoln Ave, on Tuesday, September nineteenth, from one to two PM, to make a call, five oh eight, eight two three, zero zero nine five, to make an appointment, or you can just walk in and meet with Mister Pacheco or the representative. If you need to help, if you need help with heating costs, call Citizens for Citizens, one Taunton Green, Taunton, Mass, at five oh eight, eight two three, six three four six. That's five oh eight, eight two three, six three four six. And if you need more informa, or you need that number, you can call our office here in Karen. We'll, we'll give you that number. The Friends of the Dayton Library will be hosting a Taste of Dayton at the Dayton Pavilion behind Town Hall on Monday, September eighteenth, this coming Monday, from five to seven PM. And in the past, it's been a wonderful occasion, so I hope everybody...
Dean, I believe our state representative, Patricia Hadad, will also be attending.
Well, for the Taste, Taste of Dayton?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's good. Okay, so, Dayton Historical Society? Dayton Historical Society is hosting a psychic fair and craft sale on Saturday, September twenty-third, from ten AM to five PM.